This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice Having Been Published According to Law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Councilman Batagli is absent tonight.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Councilwoman Sims?
Here.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrass?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a look at the approval of the minutes, please.
Do you want to make a motion?
We need a motion to approve the minutes from September 3rd, 2013, September 16th, 2013, September 17th, 2013, and September 30th, 2013, and also October 8th, 2013. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered.
Seconded.
Seconded. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye. Okay, at this time, you want to do this proclamation now?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, we're gonna take a little break from the norm here. We're gonna have a proclamation to give out. We had a situation happen here in Hackensack which is quite remarkable. It's actually, I'm hearing it's going viral. Could I please have James Brady come up, please? Real quick, Mr. Brady, this gentleman is coming up before us, found a little over six months ago, found an envelope with no name on it, with $850 cash in it. Mr. Brady, who at the time was homeless at the time, and I find it quite remarkable. He turned this into the police department, and after six months, nobody claimed the money. And just last week, he was given the $850. But the fact that this man gave, found this money where a lot of people would've just stuck it in their pocket is truly remarkable and just speaks volumes about, it makes you happy to be human. So, I commend you on what you've done. I'm really, really proud of what you've done, being from Hackensack. So, I have a proclamation.
Underneath, Mayor.
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor of the City of Hackensack. Whereas on April 16th, 2013, James Brady was walking in the area of Main Street and Atlantic Street when he found a Hudson City Bank envelope on the ground. And whereas, the envelope did not contain any information as to who the owner of the currency was, but contained $850 in cash. And whereas, immediately after finding the envelope, James Brady responded to police headquarters to report an incident of found property. And whereas, the found property was held by the police department for six months, during which time no one responded to the department to report that they had lost this money. And whereas, on October 16th, 2013, which is six months to the date that Mr. Brady found the envelope containing $850 in cash, and since no one had made a claim to this property, the money was returned to Mr. Brady. Now, therefore, I, Mayor John LaBrass, and other members of the City Council, do hereby commend Mr. Brady for the superior integrity that he exhibited in an extremely tempting situation. Congratulations.
Would anybody in the council like to speak on this?
I think I'd like to come forward and shake his hand as well. Why don't we do that?
Yes. Why don't you come up here? I think that's the best. There you go. That's your nice. Mr. Batagli, I'm sure passes on his appreciation also. Okay, let's move on to the City Manager's Report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Number one, I'm glad to report that the work which was being done on the railroad crossing Union Street, right here outside our parking lot, has been completed. And if anybody, anyone uses that street normally, they have to be very, very happy. That was Hackensack's version of Burma Road going over those tracks, and it's much, much improved. So, that was buttoned up and finished up over the last weekend. We are looking at a major project at the state, the DOT, will be performing on Route 4 over the Hackensack River Bridge. They, right now, are in the process of developing a PR program to get the word out about this project. The plan to begin the work sometime in the first quarter of 2014. But I understand, I've been at a couple of the meetings, it's gonna be a major project, and it's probably gonna impact us up on the north end significantly. The impact on Hackensack and Teaneck is gonna be significant. And they will be advertising some public information sessions. As a matter of fact, there'll be one on this coming Thursday, October 24th, at 6 o'clock, from 6 to 8. This is for the public to ask questions, but there'll be a whole series of these. This is gonna be at the County Building, Bergen County one, and it is in the multipurpose room on the first floor, this coming Thursday. But that's a project that's not too far down the road, and which will be significant. You recall about a month ago, or maybe six weeks ago, I reported on Public Service, we'd be doing this reconductoring project here in Hackensack. That has started, and we've had, I've had a number of instances of residents contacting my office with some inconveniences because it's a, by necessity, if you recall, it's a 24/7 project. They can't shut these jobs down. I've been in constant contact with Public Service. They've made some adjustments along the way to try to address some of the problems and some of the concerns that some of the residents have had. But certainly, if anybody feels inconvenienced, and they have what would essentially be a, you know, legitimate complaint, contact my office. I've got a good line of communication with Public Service, and they've been very, very cooperative. Right now, they're up on Summit Avenue, near Overlook, and they're, I believe today they moved the project down to a manhole on Ross. So, it's moving around, it's really kinda randomly located manholes they're working through.
You're at Summit by Lookout.
By Lookout. What did I say?
Overlook.
I meant to say Lookout, I'm sorry.
Right.
Fourth thing was, I wanted to once again mention, we have some media here. November 9th, we've got a free shredding event at the recycling center. I had announced that earlier. Residents only, no businesses. That'll be from 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock at the recycling center on Green Street. And just a reminder for anyone who has young children, this Saturday, August 26th, at the M&amp;M Building, we have our annual children's Halloween party, pumpkin painting contest, and all kinds of stuff for the kids, and some goodies. That's at 10:30 in the morning at the M&amp;M Building. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I want to address something. I know a lot of people here tonight about this SRO issue. I know there was a flyer put out in the high school to the students. I will say this, there's a meeting set up between the City Council and the Board of Education. We spoke with the Assistant Superintendent, I believe. Correct?
The meeting will be with the superintendent.
Meeting will, correct. And there will be a meeting, and we'll be addressing this issue, and hopefully we can come to some resolve. Everybody's welcome to stay. We'll go through our docket, and there'll be a public session. If you would like to speak about this issue, you're more than welcome to stay and come up and give your name to the clerk, and your address, and state your case and speak your mind. But the Council, there's not gonna be a back and forth between the Council tonight on this, because we need to speak with the Board of Education, first and foremost. As far as the flyer goes, I gotta say, I'm a little disturbed that a flyer again was put out to use the children of this town. Some of the information in that flyer can only have come through a situation that was known between the Board of Ed and this Council. So, I'm a little disturbed that most likely an adult put this flyer together and got it out there, all right? Now, everybody has the right to gather and do as they please, but I just find it using high school students is not in the best interest of the community. So, we're gonna move ahead with our docket. Ms. Clark?
Resolution number 421-13, final adoption of ordinance number 21, 2013, and ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to add new chapter 176 entitled Regulation of News Racks.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Seconded.
Clark?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
We're open to the public?
Yes. Would anybody like to speak on this, and only this ordinance tonight? Please come forward.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor.
Evening.
My name is Sorano Keith Baldeo. I'm the President and the owner of the New Jersey Pulse newspaper. I recently, it's a New Jersey newspaper, so I advanced it into Bergen County from Perse County. I have read this ordinance, and I've sent you all emails on it. Newark passed one of these the other day, and it turns out one of my boxes were missing, and we filed a notice to sue them. Now, I understand the concern is some of these members think it's an ISO. I'm not sure why it's being regulated the way it is. But I had a conversation with a couple of senators in Assemblyman Benji Wimberly, and he says he knows you, Councilman Sims. And when I showed him this resolution, he was appalled. He keeps saying, "This is ridiculous. A million-dollar bond for a plastic box? You have to register with the zoning board? This is not moving. This is standing still." Now, I understand Especialito has their boxes horribly placed, and they should be penalized because they don't really care about it. But if you drive down Main Street and you look at the New Jersey Pulse, it's clean, it's neat, it has my phone number, it complied with every law that it's supposed to comply with. It doesn't hurt anybody, doesn't jump out and hurt anybody. Now, the insurance that you're asking for, the last time I spoke here, we talked about parlor fly towing, and they've got private property, public property with no insurance. And you're asking, nobody checked on that insurance. They still don't have it. There was a bait and switch where they're telling me 164 Green Street has insurance, but there's still no insurance on government property on the other side. So, you're asking me for a million-dollar bond per box? It's just a plastic box. It doesn't have a registration number on it, or any kind of code number that you can register anywhere. That's why bicycles are not registered. There's no numbers, what a vehicles and motorcycles are, because there's a number for registration. But to ask us for a million-dollar bond in a plastic box that belongs to these people, by the way, as the news media, we represent them. We fight for them, you know? The last time I came here was to fight for them when you took government property and gave it to this private citizen for $18 a month, when they couldn't make a lot of money with that. That's what we do. We fight for the public, and we make sure they understand that you're their servants. So, when you come and you put this burden on us, we have to move those boxes, because I can't apply with this resolution. And I said to the Councilwoman, "I'm willing to work with you and find out how can we, you know, curb Especialito and the dirty boxes." And I know how to do that, but there was no conversation with you and I. We never sat down. This resolution is burdensome, it's a headache for us, it's expensive, and it really doesn't fit with federal law. So, if you pass it tonight, we're gonna file notice to sue tomorrow, but we're gonna go to federal court. It's just a simple box, and the Councilwoman says she's an attorney, federal lawsuit just comes up to half a million dollars of their money, just because you couldn't work with me to fix my box. You know, the other news media, I don't really care about them because they're for themselves. But if you, I wrote copies of the New Jersey Pulse, and they can take a look at it. I go after councilmembers, after cops, after everybody who hurt them. I fight for them. So, when you regulate my box, and I have to take it away, you're not depriving me, you're depriving them. So, I'm asking you to table this resolution where we can talk, and we can come up with a solution. All it was, was an ISO to somebody, I think I heard that, I'm not really sure what it was. There's nowhere in the history of New Jersey has this box ever hurt anybody. Bicycles has, a lot of other things has in public property. And just the fact that you're saying, move it six feet away from a crosswalk, I know what happened here. I know you looked at the other cities, and you took their resolutions, and you figured they're gonna pass it in Hackensack, but it's wrong. They did it with the Herald News, and the Herald News sued, and the Herald News won. They tried it with me in Newark, and Councilman Ramos, the acting Council President, asked, when he found out, and I spoke to him after the fact, I'm lucky I'm speaking to you now, and he asked me, "Have you ever received a ticket?" And I said, "No." He says, "Well, we're gonna repeal it and fix it where it can please everybody." But they're still being sued, because they removed 10 of my boxes, and I can't find them. So, I'm just saying, I wanna work with you on this. I don't wanna fight you. I don't want you to come back and tell them, "We're passing a resolution for $350,000," just to fight a federal lawsuit because you violated my rights, when you could've just spoken to me, and I will help you clean those guys up. I will tell you how you can pass a resolution to protect my rights, their rights. Because like I said, if you look at my finances, I'm not here for the money. I'm here when something happens to one of them, which is why I spoke here the last time. Somebody got free government property, and another guy was oppressed. So, I came here to fight for them. But when you pass this tonight, you take away that right from me. So, I have Benji Wimberly, the Assemblyman, and senators, and even my lawyers saying, "This is ridiculous." The penalty alone, the registration with the zoning board, you know, all of that is infringing on federal rights. So, I understand the ISO thing. Never in the history of New Jersey has a box that has ever hurt anybody, that you want a million-dollar bond for a plastic box. So, when you do that, you take away my newspaper from the city, you interfered my federal rights. You interfere with their rights, because when they can't fix you, and they can't fix the cops, or anybody else, they come to me, and I'm speaking only for the New Jersey Pulse. And I come here and I fight for their rights, like I did the last time. So, I'm asking you to table this resolution tonight, so that we can sit down and talk, or the next time we come back, you're gonna be asking them for funds to defend a lawsuit. It's not fair to me that Especialito and the rest of them are doing stuff that is wrong, and I'm being penalized for that. On November 1st, this takes effect. The day before that, I have to remove my box, which means you're now on my federal rights. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clear for the record, Mr. Baldeo insinuated that the Council gave away property. I want, on the record, that it wasn't this Council gave away property. It may have happened in the past. I think he's referring to some property on Green Street. By the way, we are also investigating, and it's an ongoing issue. We're really not gonna talk about it. Counselor?
Mayor, just as a point of clarification, it's not a million-dollar bond.
It's a liability insurance.
Million-dollar bond requirement. Sorry, now it's on. A million-dollar bond requirement would require a posting of $1 million, and that's not what's required here. It's a million dollars for a liability policy, and we've done some of the research with respect to how much that would cost. It's not a million dollars or anywhere near it in terms of getting a policy that would cover the injuries that may result from the regulation of the boxes. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. And it was also, it was also, thank you. It was also stated by Mr. Baldeo that no one gets hurt by these boxes, or they don't cause trouble. We have one instance where the box was moved and used to climb on, to perform a robbery down in our first ward, and it was one of the boxes that was mentioned. So, they can become troublesome. All we're asking is that we have a regulated box placed in a restricted area where we deem it's safe, and then we want insurance on the box. It's a very basic thing. I know, Mr. Baldeo, you said you'd offer to sit down. This has been going on for four years, this ordinance, four years of work.
I apologize.
Four years of work, all right? And when citizens come and complain, I mean, one street has, our main street had close to, how many?
16.
16 of these boxes that were complained about on the street. So, there's a reason this was done. I can appreciate your fact. We're not looking to inhibit anybody's free speech, or their federal rights, but this was done for a reason.
I'm just saying, I don't punish people because of what they did.
We're not looking to punish anybody. We're looking to have a regulation. I mean, I've gone up streets where busy towns, Teaneck, Cedar Lane, I didn't see one box on Cedar Lane.
I'm sorry.
Cedar Lane and Teaneck, I don't believe I see one box when I go up that street. So, I mean, they must have some regulations where they don't even allow them on the streets, which I find, yeah, but, all right?
Anybody can use a bicycle when you're climbing these roads. It doesn't satisfy punishing.
Not looking to punish anybody. It's not doing it to punish it. We're looking to safeguard the rest of the community.
My application tonight was that it's affecting me. I'm not gonna speak to, like I said, you're right. The newspapers were out of line. They shouldn't have done what they did. But I'm here now, and I wasn't here before looking at this, but I'm here now, so now I have to try to salvage this.
Right.
But passing it tonight is really gonna hurt me, because I'm new on the scene, and I don't wanna, and you're right, I've seen what the boxes do. I would love for you to regulate them, but without hurting me.
Well, I don't, we don't think this regulation, you know, liability insurance policy, I don't think it's tremendous cost to a business owner, or, I mean, any, if you're a simple tradesman, you have to have a liability policy in order to work.
It's extra money for me, and it's a bond one.
Insurance is extra money for anybody who's in business. I understand that.
Well, that's always against the structure.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
How are you?
My name is Joseph Campania, 33 Essex Street, www.Ecc33.com. I'd like to comment on the resolution. I think it's a great idea to make them uniform, make them attractive, keep them safe, keep them clean. And also, what is not, I see, included in the resolution is positioning. I believe it should be a property owner's right to reject or accept the presence of a box in front of their property, even though it's on the right of way. Speaking about insurance, a million-dollar liability policy is not, does not cost a lot of money, okay? It's not much at all. And the problem is that if someone hurts themselves, uses a box, or if it obstructs traffic, it becomes the subject of a lawsuit. And then, me as the property owner, through discovery, oh, well, it happened in front of 33 Essex Street, then I become liable, and my insurance rates are gonna go up. I'm gonna get a certified letter of lawsuit. So, I think it's important to include in this resolution that the property owner has the right to reject, to object, and disallow any of these boxes, as well as a public telephone in front of their property. I mean, because we do take care of our sidewalk. I'm there every morning with a picker-upper picking up trash, because if someone trips on the trash, I didn't do my job. And I'm also protecting the city, because if someone trips on the trash that someone throws down, the city's gonna get called to court. So, I'm protecting you, I'm asking the city to protect us property owners, and include something in the resolution to give us our property rights. Well, I salute the flag. I salute the Constitution. That includes my property rights, and my right to speak here. So, you know, I can understand the need for insurance, regulation, making them uniform, making them look good, keeping them safe, but also, give us the rights that we deserve and we pay taxes for. Thank you.
Thank you. I defer that again to the Counselor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, in response to the resident's question, there are some practical difficulties with permitting property owners who are adjoining this public sidewalk, or whatever area it is, for rejecting that. And we did look into it, and we concluded that that might not necessarily withstand legal scrutiny, so, and, you know, just for the Council's benefit, and I know the Council is aware, but for the public's benefit, a lot of research went into creating this ordinance, and it is an issue because there are, you know, free speech issues associated with it. So, we...
I applaud the ordinance, it's really well written. However, I had a problem with the last Council with a bus stop in my property. I was able to eliminate this bus stop because my tenants complained that I had a duty with liability. Free speech only applies to the news itself, not the box which is carried. If you wanna distribute the news, there are other ways to distribute the news. I can understand, and I applaud your research and the way this is written. However, my property owner's rights supersede that of the city to tell me who can place something in the right of way that I am legally responsible for. It's my insurance company who's covering my insurance. We're still the partners in this, so we both have to agree. We both have to agree whether that box, or that telephone, can be in my right of way because I'm partially liable for it. And I think that will withstand scrutiny. Maybe a lawsuit against a city for not allowing the distribution vehicle will not. What the news can still do is sort it out. But you don't force a property owner to put a box on their property. They call up and say, "I don't want it here, it should be removed." Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, 184 Hudson Street. I agree, Mr. Campania. When they tried to place a box on my property, I called my insurance company, and they said I was responsible for it. Something happened, if somebody pushed, had a fight, pushed them against the box because it's on my property, my insurance would have to cover it. So, the gentleman before that has New Jersey Pulse, he's worried about his insurance. The property owner also has to worry about their insurance. He doesn't know the history of this. Three years ago, we had a wonderful ordinance in effect, and one of the council persons decided that they were going to rescind it because they wanted the special boxes, all these yellow dots seem to appear all over the City of Hackensack. We had drugs being stored in them. The one box was moved to step on to rob the house, to rob an apartment. They were just ISOs all over the place. They just popped over, all over. We need to know where they go and how they go. We don't see this in any other town. It was just, it was a liability for the city, and it also was an ISO. And I enjoy that New Jersey Pulse. I picked it up downstairs. There's other ways for people to distribute newspapers. They can bring them into the stores and let people pick them up there. We found at the bus stops that people were just taking them out of the box, looking at them, and just throwing them on the bus stop. And we had papers all over the bus stops, under the bus stops, and all over the place. They didn't really, they didn't really read them. They didn't take them home. They just took them out of the box and threw them down. And the bus stops became really, really an ISO. So, this is what happened. It was abused, and therefore, we need to monitor it, we need to regulate it. And asking to have a fee for each box is not unreal. You get a dog's license, anytime there's any kind of paperwork involved, with any kind of, to keep track of anything, you ask for a minimum license. It's to do the paperwork, it's to have a record of it. So, by monitoring how many we have and where they go, we know where they are. But sometimes, one of them will put in front of the bus stop. People get out of the bus, and they're gonna fall all over the newspaper rack. And the other one was, they put it in place of the garbage pail, and then they put the garbage pail in front of the bus stop. So, the garbage pail was more important than the news rack. So, this was abused, it was rescinded without being replaced, and this is why we have this. And like I said, the newspaper, it's not, we're not against the newspaper, we're against the box that keeps them, and we don't, we just want the city to look better. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a...
Yes?
Go ahead.
I would like to clarify something. You mentioned that there was a councilman who allowed boxes.
Well, one of the councilpeople wanted to rescind it for X, Y, Z reasons, and it was because there was a connection with the people who...
Was it the present council?
No, the past council.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
All right, sorry. Thank you. It was three years ago. Thank you.
Counselor, your opinion on some language in this, maybe to protect the...
Well, what you have here now is a requirement that the company putting the box in actually maintain insurance and name the city as an additional insured. And so, each time that there would be a potential claim, any aggrieved party, or someone who's injured, or anything like that, will be on notice that there is an insurance policy in place, the city is an additional insured, and so it's technically city property, and it would be more likely, I would think, that anyone who's injured would be availing themselves to that insurance policy, rather than the stretch of, you know, a, an adjoining owner. I don't wanna get into, like, what the Supreme Court says in terms of maintaining property, but it's if you create the condition outside of your property, if you're a commercial business owner and you create the condition, like, you don't clean up ice, then you can be more liable. But you're not creating this issue. I'm not giving legal advice to the resident, and I would suggest that he get his own legal advice, but my understanding of the law is that this, the commercial business owner has not created this situation. The city has allowed this through a permitting process, has got, has got, made sure that the appropriate insurances are in place, and that as a result of this policy now, the culpable party will be the owner of the box, and the city will be named as an additional insured to protect it. So, the insurances will be in place.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Eisen?
Good evening, everybody. Um, Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive. I'm, I'm kind of surprised by some of the tone of the discussion tonight. I realize there are practical issues in the placement of these boxes, but almost everybody in this room seems to be forgetting the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And case law on First Amendment issues is very, very, very broad. It is difficult for rules that infringe in any way upon our First Amendment rights to be held valid. And I don't know whether anybody has checked this resolution with a constitutional expert. The average lawyer would have simply no idea in that area, but I don't believe this resolution, as it is written, will stand challenge on federal basis. And I think before you try to enforce it and end up with lawsuits, you really ought to have it checked out with somebody with expertise in First Amendment law.
Again, Counselor, I refer to you.
We've, we've fully researched the, the ordinance. It is a, it, obviously, because of the First Amendment issues, there are, um, a lot of protections afforded to these types of uses, and so, um, we've done, um, we, we, we think we've drafted a, an ordinance that will withstand constitutional...
Are there similar, similar ordinances in similar communities to ours throughout North Jersey?
There are, there are, a, and in other states, uh, because this would be a federal law issue. So, there, this is an amalgamation of a lot of different provisions from others.
Have they been challenged or withstood the challenge, if there was one?
There are, there are ordinances that have withstood constitutional privileges, uh, challenges, and ones that have not. So, we have taken, uh, kind of a, 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 picked and choose the provisions that would withstand, and obviously left off the, uh, the provisions that would not withstand scrutiny.
Thank you, sir. This time, I'd like a motion, please.
Offered?
I'll second. Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number twenty-one-two thousand and thirteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-two dash thirteen, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid. Current fund, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Grants, four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Payroll, one million, five hundred thousand, seventy-five, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Public parking system, one thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Capital account is zero. Trust account, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Total expenditures, two million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Inter-funds slash transfers, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-three dash thirteen, be it resolved that United Water New Jersey Incorporated is hereby requested to erect one fire hydrant at the following designated place to be used for fire purposes only, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the company, and its rates as set forth in its schedule of rates filed with the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities in Newark, New Jersey. Location of hydrant, proposed hydrant, south side of Van Wettering Place, approximately thirty-eight feet west of River Street.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-four dash thirteen, whereas Ford Motor Credit Company, Dearborn, Michigan, has approved lease number eight-three-nine-four-nine-zero-two for the City of Hackensack to purchase through Carmen Dodge, uh, Newcastle, Delaware, who has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract, whereas the City of Hackensack wishes to lease six two thousand and fourteen Dodge Chargers for the police department for a three-year period with an option to purchase pursuant to a lease-purchase agreement authorized by the local public contract law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack authorizes the execution of a new lease for six new two thousand and fourteen Dodge Chargers for the police department, be it further resolved that the chief financial officer has certified that funds are available.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-five dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack wishes to have police package equipment supplied slash installed to the six new two thousand and fourteen Dodge Chargers for the police department pursuant to the local public contracts law, whereas ten-dash-seventy-five Emergency Lighting LLC, Ringwood, New Jersey, has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract, whereas the purchase price will be for ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack authorizes the police package equipment to be supplied slash installed to the six new two thousand and fourteen Dodge Chargers for the police department from ten-dash-seventy-five Emergency Lighting LLC, Ringwood, New Jersey, be it further resolved that the chief financial officer has certified that funds are available.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-six dash thirteen, whereas three quotes were received from Diesel Truck Services, Gerber RV Truck and Bus, and the Borough of Paramus to restore the fire bus for the Fire Department of the City of Hackensack that was submerged in floodwater due to Hurricane Sandy, and whereas the fire chief advised the city manager and the director of purchasing that he had reviewed such quotations and found that Diesel Truck Service, Garfield, New Jersey, is reasonable and satisfactory. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack will authorize repairs in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to the fire bus for the City of Hackensack, and the, be further advised that the, further resolved that the chief financial officer has certified that funds are available.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-seven dash thirteen, whereas the New Jersey Attorney General's Guide Line states that all property is to be returned to the rightful owner, and whereas the City of Hackensack is holding two hundred and forty-five dollars in the unallocated cash current fund from the Hackensack Police Department regarding case number twelve-dash-two-eight-four-four-one dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Hackensack that the municipal tax collector is hereby authorized to refund two hundred and forty-five dollars to its rightful owner, Jamar Travis.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-eight dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack utilizes Bergen County Cooperative Pricing Contract for diesel fuel, fuel oil, and gasoline, whereas these purchases are made on an as-needed basis, whereas these purchases will not exceed six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for two thousand and thirteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, authorize the City of Hackensack to make purchases under the Bergen County Cooperative Pricing Council contracts.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-twenty-nine dash thirteen, whereas state statute permits a veteran's deduction to be granted to qualifying property owners, whereas Robert R. Ramp residing at one-sixty-three Cedar Avenue, Hackensack, having satisfied the necessary requirements, is entitled to a veteran's deduction for two thousand and fourteen, and from year to year without the necessity of renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the tax collector is directed to give Robert R. Ramp a credit of two hundred and fifty dollars for two thousand and fourteen, and an additional prorated credit for block five-ninety-two, lot nineteen, for two thousand and thirteen.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty dash thirteen, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the proper officers be and are hereby authorized to make the following refunds for the reasons stated. The refunds begin with, in, in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents for block thirty-eight, lot nine, and end with four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents for block four-eleven, lot eighteen.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-one dash thirteen, whereas, as on November sixth through November ninth, two thousand and thirteen, the New Jersey State Attorney General's Office in collaboration with various state agencies, and in cooperation with the New Jersey judiciary, will be sponsoring a fugitive safe surrender program designed to offer an opportunity for individuals wanted for non-violent offenses in New Jersey to turn themselves in, and in the same day, remove any warrant filed against them, and to adjust the underlying municipal or state summons or complaint filed against them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack does hereby support the fugitive safe surrender program, the New Jersey State Office of the Attorney General, and all other program collaborators and participants based upon the significant benefit afforded to the residents of the state.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-two dash thirteen, whereas the Hackensack Health Department participates in the vaccines for children and adult vaccine programs from the New Jersey Department of Health, which provides free vaccines for residents of Hackensack which are eligible, and whereas it has been identified by the VFC program that an alternate site must be identified for storage of the vaccines in case of a disaster such as power outage. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack that the Hackensack Health Department is authorized to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Elmwood Park Health Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-three dash thirteen, whereas state statute provides that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of the City of Hackensack hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the calendar year two thousand and thirteen in the sum of seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, which is available from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-four dash thirteen, whereas the governing body desires to resolve the litigation caption sixty-two dash sixty-four Main Street LLC, Michael J. Monahan, Frank Callahan, Danny Callahan, and Joan P. Monahan versus City of Hackensack Superior Court of New Jersey Law Division, Bergen County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Hackensack that the city attorney is authorized to settle said claim and execute the requisite settlement documents.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty...
I'm in ready to my hand, I would like to speak on this.
It's a resolution, there's... You have to wait till the public session, Mr. McCullough, on that.
Do you have to wait till the public session?
Yes, and an ordinance, as, as an ordinance, for the final reading, you would get to speak on it, but not a resolution. Thank you.
Resolution number four-thirty-five dash thirteen, whereas it has become necessary for the City of Hackensack to engage various professional service providers, whereas the city issued an advertised request for qualifications on the city's website and in official newspapers on Monday, July eighth, two thousand and thirteen, whereas qualification statements by professionals were submitted to the city by July eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Hackensack that the city finds it in the best interest to assign the following professional service providers to the following positions, matters, and assignments. Municipal Auditor/Financial Advisor, D. Maria and D. Maria. Compensation will not exceed one hundred thousand dollars without the express written authorization of the city. Redevelopment Attorney, Archer and Greener. Compensation will not exceed fifty thousand dollars without the express written authorization of the city.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-six dash thirteen, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that Andrew Simuluka be and is hereby appointed alternate municipal prosecutor for the City of Hackensack.
Have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-seven dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack desires to enter into an agreement donating a nineteen eighty-five Mack decommissioned fire truck to the County of Bergen to be utilized by the County of Bergen for training purposes at its fire academy, and now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Hackensack that the city manager be and is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with the appropriate authority of the County of Bergen for the donation of the fire truck.
Have a motion, please.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-eight dash thirteen, whereas it has become necessary for the City of Hackensack to engage various professional service providers, be it resolved by the council of the City of Hackensack, that the city finds it in its best interest to assign the following professional service providers to the following positions, matters, and assignments. Alternate Tax Appeal Attorney Kaufman, Samararo, and Liebman, compensation will not exceed twenty thousand dollars without the express written authorization of the city. Special Litigation Counsel Milberg, be City of Hackensack Attorney for Richard Stolito, Greco and D. Filippo, compensation will not exceed forty thousand dollars. City of Hackensack Property Damage Claim against New Jersey Transit, Greco and D. Filippo, compensation will not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Have a motion, please.
I'll offer.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number four-thirty-nine dash thirteen, whereas by resolution number four-sixteen dash thirteen dated October eighth, two thousand and thirteen, the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack approved tax refund in the amount of $2,450.05 for Sensary, two thousand eleven LLC, twenty-five Main Street, Court Plaza North Hackensack for property located at fifteen Main Street that was donated to the city effective June eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas in order to formalize this refund, it is necessary for the tax collector to cancel the taxes from June eleventh, two thousand and thirteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the tax collector is hereby authorized to cancel the aforementioned taxes in the amount of $2,450.05.
Have a motion, please.
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Uh.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the docket. Have a motion, it's that time to open the meeting to the public. May I please have a motion?
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilman Sims.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Okay, everybody, if you want to speak, you come up to the podium, you give your name and your address to the clerk, and at that time you will get five minutes, all right? We ask that everybody be civil, there'll be no back and forth between the council, all right, and all directives, if any, from the council will go through the chair. Sir?
Steve Gelber, three oh four Clinton Place. I've been for a few weeks since this matter of the million dollars has come to light, which, by the way, Mr. Brady may have found eight fifty, but congratulations to you guys on finding a million. This matter has disturbed me a bit, obviously, as it has many people in the room for a month, and it's no secret that thus far in your sitting time as the council, I haven't agreed with too many of the things you've done, but on this one, I'm going to give you a tip of the hat and say congratulations, and I've been putting together, unfortunately, I didn't want to come here and talk to you about it tonight, I've been gathering up all my information for a few weeks on it, and I was hoping to do a nice little write-up on it, but someone passed out some flyers, so I'm going to come and be on your side tonight. Unfortunately, it's not a new thing, but it is disgusting, these flyers and using of kids at the high school to be political props, but here we are, and there's absolute misinformation out there on the issue. As Ms. Heck knows and Mr. Kramer both know, I've used a lot of OPA requests in the past three weeks and found that not only is it absolutely not true that there hasn't been an SRO at the high school for the past month and a half, I've got the communications between Mr. Lacanow and Director Mordaga ensuring each other that there will be an SRO at the schools, and, you know, I'm no expert in policing, wouldn't dream of saying I am, wouldn't know the first thing about being a police officer. I'll tell you to avoid the police at all costs, but we do have an expert in student resource offic-ing, being a student resource officer here tonight, he's nationally acclaimed, and I would only hope that he's here to tell us tonight the same things that the National Association of Student Resource Officers would, and the same thing that the Department of Justice has continually put out in publications and are all available to everyone in the room on the internet, that the most effective form of policing at a school and the most important piece of policing at a school is proper patrol of the grounds and perimeter of the school. That's the first leg, and that's exactly what the school has been getting since the opening of school, and Mr. Lacanow, I mean, I'd put it public right out on the website, I'd put the communications between the Director Mordaga and Mr. Lacanow, I'd put him right out there. The officers have been present, and I would only hope that Mr. Martin is here tonight not to get involved in the politics, but to get up and agree that that is what the Department of Justice and the National Association of Student Resource Officers continually put out, and it is what the school has been getting since school opened. So now, one month after finding out about this, I'd love to know what your investigation has revealed. I'd also like to know, because it hasn't been mentioned in the paper, but the middle school had a student resource officer for a number of years, and I'd like to know if we were reimbursed for that or if that's included in the million bucks. I'd also just like to say that if the Board of Education, which it's clear from what has been quoted in the paper, wants to posture on this and say that they don't have the money and they're getting jammed up for the cash to pay, maybe they should go to Maywood Rochelle Park in South Hackensack, because no secret that they haven't been paying any right per pupil cost for several years, maybe they can kick him and give us, give the Board of Ed some cash there, because the city council shouldn't be continually subsidizing the Board of Education while subsidizing Maywood Rochelle Park and South Hackensack for resources that they're getting and not paying the full ticket for. Now, one last thing that I'll give you guys a thumbs up for, you have advertised on the website, we are looking for a full-time CFO. That's great, because maybe if we had one, this wouldn't have happened. So, you know what? I'll tip it off to you guys on this one.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
Danny Demoski, one forty-eight Division Place. Just here to find out the update of the parking issues we're having on Division Street and Porter Street and with the parking permits.
Yes, we spoke about this last night at the Cal session, and basically, we would have to change the whole ordinance, the parking ordinance for that area in order for you to accommodate that, and if the city puts itself in a position for everybody to complain about parking, that we had to change an ordinance every time we have parking ordinance, every time we had to do it, we'd be, we'd be non-stop changing ordinances. Now, we realize you have the two permits that were given to you supposedly erroneously, but you were able to keep them, correct?
Yeah, we have two cars right now.
Plus you have four spots on your property.
Yes, and there's-
Six spots. Now, West Street is, I don't know how far it is, but I know one of you's claimed that you park there on occasion, or maybe your tenant's-
I mean, our tenant is parking where it's possible. At night, you can't park on Porter, we're on, there's one house on Porter, and they have about eight cars, and we're on the corner of Porter, so-
When you say "they," who is "they"?
Our neighbors, so, on Porter Street.
Okay.
Our residents, that is resident apartment, resident house, the rest of the property's there or a commercial.
I mean, we're not in a position to change the ordinance just to create more.
I mean, there's got to be some way to, like, uh, some kind of, just like a discrepancy where our corner house, since we're on the corner of Porter and Division, kind of, we fall into Porter Street as a, we can get parking permits.
I mean, is there parking within the block of your house? That's what I'm asking. I mean, there's, there's a lot of people that have to walk, you know, a little bit to their house, and I know it's not the most convenient thing, but, excuse me, sir, only, you can't speak from the audience, I'm sorry. You can't, no.
Well, basically, basically, the way, so, Division Street, I mean, South Hackensack right there, we, we don't, we're not resident of South Hackensack, so we can't get parking permits. At night, we can't park on any of the other streets, I mean, West Street is completely packed. Hobart, you can't park on the east side of Hobart, I mean, even on Hobart, some, there's no parking there. So our resident, I mean, we have three cars, my mom has a, has a car, my, our neighbor's upstairs, he has a car, it's five cars, we have one, basically, we're asking for only one permit, we're asking for eight, we're asking for one permit.
Well, you just named five people, you have six-
Yeah, but we have a driveway, so we park on the driveway, where the permit issue we're having is for our tenant. I mean, he needs a parking permit, he needs to park on our street, I mean, he needs to park anywhere, either on Division or on Porter, that's the process we're having.
Again, you just mentioned, you have six, basically, spots, four in the driveway, two permits, resident permits, so if you name five plus the-
Well, apparently, I mean, those-
Sir, please, you can't speak from the, you can speak after your son speaks, but you can't speak over him, I'm sorry.
Basically, the parking permits, I mean, based on what you guys are saying, are not, not valid, so if we park on the street and we get, we do get ticketed, what happens then?
They're being honored.
What's that?
Those two, those two stickers are being honored.
He said, we discussed last night, the two you have are being honored.
Oh, so those two we have, they're being honored?
That's, that's correct.
You sure about that?
That's what we're being told, yes.
Oh, so-
And the email, the email from Lieutenant Aquilis said-
Oh, so basically, so we do park on the street, and we do get, we don't get, we get ticketed, then what happens?
If you get a ticket on those resident stickers, what should they do?
No, there should be no ticket on those residents, they're, they're valid stickers.
They're supposed to be valid stickers, that's what I'm saying, you have six spots.
I mean, I mean, they're, based on what we've been going through for the past two months, those tickets are not valid, based on our cars. I mean, example, I used to live in New Jersey, I moved to Maryland, that sticker is on my car.
Steve?
So I'm, right now, I mean, my car still has a sticker on it.
And you're, you're in Maryland, you're living in Maryland?
Well, I mean, the car's registered in New Jersey again, but I went back and forth, I mean, it's been re-registered, so the-
The car, the car is registered in Jersey, and the sticker is on it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the traffic, the traffic lieutenant has, has reported to me that the two stickers, even though they were issued in error, are still valid and they're being, and you're being utilized, as far as I know.
Okay, so, what about our tenant, who can't get, can't get a parking permit to park on the street?
They're not gonna-
What are we gonna do for him?
We'd have to change the whole parking ordinance for the whole block, we can't do that for one parking spot. We just can't do that. You'd have every crowded area where parking is an issue in town coming down to change a ordinance for one block. Just can't do that, I wish we could, but we can't.
Well, I mean-
You, we, you were given two erroneously, and they're allowing those to continue.
All right, well, we're, we're, we're going to figure out a way, so we're going to have to get, figure out how we're gonna do this.
I apologize.
We don't have the stickers, because I, and I said that car, the sticker went with the car.
All right, so apparently, okay, so you're right, the one car, we just, we just basically sold that one car, so that sticker's not on that car anymore, so my dad doesn't have that car anymore.
Can we get a transfer of that, and because it was given erroneously, they still should have that ticket, that sticker?
Well, those stickers, they were told, they were illegally given to us.
Not illegally, mistakenly.
Erroniously.
Mistakenly.
Difference.
They were given to you mistake, you shouldn't have gotten them, it was a mistake.
But the city is going to honor them.
It was a mistake that they, they made.
Okay, mistake, that's all.
They admitted, they, they admitted, they admitted they, they, they admitted they made a mistake, but we're allowing you to keep those two because it was our mistake.
Oh, so my dad just basically, my dad just traded in his car in?
Doesn't have the sticker, only he has it. And he's coming back, and tomorrow, we have to-
The first time I hear this part of it, so, okay.
I mean, my, I mean, my dad's, my dad's car, my car, were originally registered, my dad just, my dad just bought, his leaseback, that sticker's no longer in his car. I still have a sticker on my car, but my car, it's been back and forth between Maryland-
Here's the bottom line, we're gonna allow you guys the two, the two permits, the two residential permits, all right?
Okay, so my dad can get that permit transferred to his new car, to his other car.
You're entitled to the two, because if we give them to you erroneously, we're gonna honor that, all right?
All right, all right, well, we'll figure it out.
Bring it, bring in your registrations and see Mr. Loy.
Okay, my dad will do that, all right.
Thank you.
But we can't, we, we cannot make more spots, and we cannot change the ordinance as it existed. They put home to other streets, other streets, because it's not only my house, the whole street's full, and all, they have to have a sticker for other streets, and if you still have a sticker for tenants, are we going to survive with no rent? They have to pay taxes, everything.
I under, I understand that, but you have four, four onsite spots, and we gave you two, that's six cars, one lot.
But they have three cars, and we have five cars.
Okay.
Put a piece.
I, I understand, sir, we're only gonna, we're gonna honor the two that were given erroneously.
Put a little piece.
Where's the son? Sir, sir, you can't, your five minutes is up, you have, your son's gonna bring the registrations into Mr. Loy Akino, and you're, they're gonna deal with and give you the two stickers. Ma'am, sir, all right. Your, your five minutes is up, sir, we have a lot of people in here tonight, I ask that you take your son and bring the registrations to Mr. Loy Akino for those two permits.
For our, our cars.
I can't, and I, I don't know what to tell you, if you bought six cars, we can't say we're gonna give you six more spots, we can't do that, it's just not the way it works.
Our neighbors, their first place, they have two somewhere.
You live, you live in a manuf, M-one zone, it's manufacturing, it's, it's, I apologize, but that's one of the problems, parking is tough. Mr. Albelino?
Francis W. Albelino, known as Frank, I'm here as a representative to speak on behalf of the Hackensack Board of Education, one ninety-one Second Street, in regards to the SRO. Just to clear up some information I was giving out earlier, an SRO operates inside the school, we do not have an SRO in the school. I understand they were patrolling outside the school, we need them in the school, because in the school, the students can see them, the students can get to know them, they can feel comfortable with them, they can talk to them, they won't be afraid of it or intimidated by the police officer. We need that officer in the school. Second thing is, the middle school did have an SRO, it was a grant through the Police Department, I'm hoping maybe Director Mordaga can look into that to see if there's other grants to put another SRO back into the middle school. I'm happy to hear about this meeting, but I have to tell you folks, I have no knowledge of it, our board attorney doesn't, two other trustees are here, Mrs. Coles and Mr. Nunamaka, none of us have any knowledge of this meeting, but I am happy to hear about it, but I don't know who you spoke to.
I spoke to your sister superintendent today.
Mrs. Marks?
No.
Mr. Chikelli?
He was a former principal of Fairmont School.
Mr. Chikelli, okay. Well, we have not been notified yet, but I'm happy to hear about it, but I do want to inform the public some information. We were the first in the state of New Jersey to have an SRO, it goes back to nineteen eighty-two. It's a nationally recognized program, as we all know, one of our SROs was nationally recognized as the SRO of the year. This happens because of the cooperation between the city and the Board of Ed, and that's what we're looking for again, that cooperation. We have correspondents that goes back and forth that says we're gonna have an SRO, but unfortunately, the SRO never did show up. We did do a survey of all the school districts, seventy-five school districts in the area, thirty-two of them responded to our survey about SROs, twenty-two do not have SROs. Of the ten that do, Cresskill, I'm sorry, Fairlawn pays fifty percent of the SRO salary, Ho-Hoak is two-thirds, Leonia hires retired police officers at twenty-five dollars per hour, we want unretired police officer, New Milford splits the cost with the borough, Pascagoula Valley High School pays thirty thousand dollars, Saddle Brook has retired officers, and the following communities do not pay for their SRO, Cresskill, Garfield, which has one in the middle school and the high school, Richfield, and Teaneck. In addition, we understand there was some confusion over Lodi, so we called Lodi, and they do have two SROs, they do pay a hundred thousand dollars for the two SROs. Mr. Abeta, as you know, our interim superintendent, is a former Lynnhurst superintendent, he checked with them, he didn't want to go by his memory, they do have an SRO, they do not pay for their SRO, and that's one of the issues, is what we pay. Okay, again, I'm happy to hear that we're having this meeting, I really am, we've known each other a long time, I mean, the city and the Board of Ed aren't going anywhere, we have to work this issue out. This is, you know, the SRO, the money that comes from the taxpayers, it doesn't come from any other different organization, it's in your budget, it's in our budget, it's kind of like we're double-dipping the taxpayers in a sense. Again, I, you know what, I don't want to go over, I don't want to go over all the, all the correspondents that were sent back and forth, because now we're going to have this meeting, but my request to the city council is, tomorrow morning, will we have an SRO? That's my question.
Tomorrow morning, you will not have an SRO inside the school, no.
Okay, we're gonna resolve this, Mr. Mayor, why can't we have that SRO?
Because I don't know if there's a, SRO number one is a trained officer that takes, has to take a course-
I understand that.
-to be an SRO, I'm not even assured by our police director that we have an SRO ready at that, this stage.
Detective Pocaw was there all last year.
Okay, well, I also know there's rotation system in, in SROs where there should be a certain rotation on SROs, and that's something I would, I would defer to our police director on.
Okay, please remember, there's fifteen hundred Hackensack residents in that building between kids and adults. Thank you. And I look forward to the meeting.
Okay.
I'm not gonna name my full five minutes to these people, I have a question.
Yes.
On your resolution, four thirty-four thirteen.
Monahan?
Yes.
Yes.
You said that you've directed the city attorney is authorized to settle the claim and execute the requisite settlement and documents.
Yes.
Well, I got sued in that too, and I'm not the City of Hackensack. I got sued, the mayor and council, the old mayor and council got sued, the planning board got sued, and we're also named individually, and we were doing it-
This is, this is just, not to cut you off, Mr. McCullough, but that's a different This is, this is just, not to cut you off, Mr. McCall, but that's a different case situation, it's not this particular issue.
No, this is the Monahan case.
There's several, unfortunately.
There's many.
There's several Monahan cases, this isn't the one-
Okay, well, then while we're, while we're on this.
Yes.
What is the city going to do about this case, as far as representing the old mayor and council, the planning board?
I believe council can place for anybody that was sued in that case.
That's correct.
Is indemnified fully, ex, including ex-council members like yourself and anybody who's-
Nobody notified us as far as-
Hasn't been necessary yet.
It's not necessary?
Hasn't been necessary to notify anybody yet, but everybody, we've seen to it that everybody's going to be covered.
Not from the old school, you know, if you asked a question.
I actually had somebody else who was sued in that, called me to see what the situation was.
Okay.
And I had to tell them.
That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. McCall, but you're covered. I just wanted to verify one other thing, too, I know Mr. Albolino has already left the podium, but he did mention that the previous speaker had said an SRO was outside the school, the previous speaker did not say that, he said the first line of defense, and best line of defense is the grounds and perimeter. And he did actually state that the SRO is inside the school, to my knowledge. Next, please.
Thomas Lydon, 151 Prospect.
Yes, sir.
I'm here for two things, really. The first one is regarding something that happened in front of our building two weeks ago. And it was when Jerry Sohn got hit by a car. And there's a number of reasons, it's very dark in that area, we need more light, for one thing, and we do need a crossing area around that time. We have three buildings on the west side of Prospect at that point, and it's well over 600 people living in there. We're the only one on that street that has commercial buildings across the street. We have the restaurant, Delicatessen, who also have an eating area next door to it, beauty shops, a gym, and then in 170, which is right across from us also, we have all medical offices. So it isn't just that, I'm coming because of one person that was there. We're having some work done on my building, I happen to be outside, I had to take four people across the street during the day because of the traffic. Most of them were handicapped in some way, they were having trouble walking, and they were saying, "Don't step out in front of the cars, they'll run you down," which is true. I had to step out, but it was a fair distance, and I'm like, here I am, you know, trying to stop the traffic, but they don't stop for these people. And there's no way for them to get across this street. And as I said, most of them are going to the medical treatment centers in these buildings. And there's also a gym across there, so it's one of these things that people are used to crossing, they have no time to cross, not sufficient time. And so I think that if they had something there just to slow them down, we wouldn't have had what we had last Tuesday, two weeks ago, Tuesday night. Jerry had come home from work, was coming across the bellpost, though, we were having a meeting for our building, he got killed. So, you know, I think it could be a consideration to have something to slow them down. Okay, and I'm known to be very short with my second thing, too.
Okay, would you like the city manager to respond to that?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that, all police work, traffic studies nationwide, pedestrian safety studies, mid-block crosswalks are more dangerous than no crosswalk. Unfortunately, we have a situation where people essentially are jaywalking, which is what happened, you have, occasionally will have a tragedy. A mid-block crosswalk has been shown to encourage people to cross mid-block, and drivers are never expecting to come upon a crosswalk in the middle of the block. You should go to the corner and cross, I mean, obviously, Mr. Sohn was a very dear friend to so many of us.
Right.
But the fact of the matter was, he was jaywalking. And a mid-block crosswalk does not help the situation, only makes it worse. We installed, with some trepidation, essentially a mid-block crosswalk near the medical center, and it's been a problem, it's been troublesome. That's really not an answer, they should be crossing at the corner. Everyone should cross at the corners where you have a crosswalk, and where a driver has an expectation that he must slow down. Mid-block, it's not going to happen.
But when you're talking about someone 80 years old, that's trying to cross, but then to walk down to the corner, you realize how far both corners are from that.
You'll get no argument from me, but what I'm saying is that a mid-block crosswalk doesn't help the situation, in many ways, it makes it worse. That's, and that's been shown, and that's the problem. I don't disagree with you, you make a good point, but a mid-block crosswalk is not the answer. Now, we're already speaking about some traffic calming to slow people down a little bit there, but to put a mid-block crosswalk in is really, really not a, not a good option.
No, even signs say, you know, slow down.
That traffic calming is something we're already talking about, yes, yes.
Okay, and I'll be very quickly to set this thing, and it deals with almost the same area. It's between my building, which is 151, and 135, which is the Pierre. We have a pole that is at 25-degree angle over the street. We, I have a whole letter, we wrote to Public Service, Public Service, oh, have you checked with the telephone companies instead of us? Telephone company, if there's electrical wires up there, they have to take care of it. We sent a letter, and I'll give you these pictures.
I got, I don't know, I don't have those, I got something on that, and they have it.